For May 5th, 2015 at 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. My name is Maurice Whitman. I'm the chair. Members present so far are Michael Zirler and John Litten, and I am also a member. Rich Stephens is going to be late. Tardy anyhow, and I don't know about Liz. So I think we should start anyhow. Since Rich will have to recuse himself from PB 1507, since it's the lowest number. For any other reason, I can draw him up?
No, that's perfect.
I'd like to hear the pre-application for 181 Hugo Not Street. Is this Patty?
Hi, yes. Patty Brooks, and I appreciate very much you indulging.
Sure.
My apologies for being late.
Come on in.
I had the pleasure of meeting Michael at the town planning board meeting, which thank you very much for coming. It was very helpful, and I apologize I was unable to make your last meeting, and I wanted the opportunity to be able to-
I couldn't make it to here either.
Oh, okay. Well, and this way I had the opportunity to meet the board and have you meet me, and discuss the project. How are you, Liz? And so, since the time that Heidi appeared before this board, I understand that the town and the village are trying to work out a mutually acceptable time to have a joint meeting, and that May 27th has been considered. I spoke to Chairman Calamano, because that's a Wednesday night where I have a regular planning board meeting in another town, and I have a public hearing in Blooming Grove. So I had asked him if it were acceptable to the town, and I discussed with the village if we were able to have that meeting held on June 8th instead, which is their regular Monday meeting. So I wanted to discuss that with this board this evening. Basically, what we've tried to do, as you know, although it's a simple two-lot subdivision, it is complicated in the fact that it is a Type 1 seeker action, because it is close proximity to the Hugo Not historic district. I received approval from the town of New Falls Planning Board has declared their intent to be lead agent. They have approved my circulation list and my notice of intent, which we hope to circulate tomorrow or the next day. So once we circulate the notice of intent, we of course have to wait the 30 days for all of the responses to come back, which would bring us to probably like around June 7th. So I figured if we met on the 8th, then that part of the process will be done. We also, because the property is located in both the town and the village, and the road frontage is entirely within the village, we need to seek a variance from the town, because we're technically creating a lot in the town of New Falls with zero road frontage. So we'll be appearing before the town of New Falls ZBA for our first review on May 12th. And then the plan is if we're able to have a joint meeting on June 8th with the village and town planning boards, we will then have our town of New Falls ZBA anticipated public hearing on June 9th, which would allow potentially a joint public hearing with the town and the village planning boards to happen on June 22nd, because at that point hopefully all the ducks will have aligned in their lovely little row.
Could you repeat what you said about the June 9th public hearing?
That's for the ZBA.
Oh, ZBA, okay.
Yeah. So I figured it was better to push the timeline out a little bit and make sure that all the steps were done in the proper row. And I would submit this timeline to Brogan if, you know, for the board's consideration. And again, I do appreciate you hearing me out this evening. I know I wasn't originally on the agenda.
Okay. Well, I have no problem with your timetable. I think it's workable. I'll leave it up to the members present, and they're the only ones who would be able to vote anyhow, whether they would be able to make the June 9th, no, June 8th.
June 8th.
June 8th meeting. And so we would need that one and the public hearing.
Correct. The purpose of the joint, first joint meeting would be for the boards to jointly determine that they wanted to hold a joint public hearing, and to actually schedule it for the 22nd, which would be two weeks later.
Has town planning board aside from declaring lead agency, have they done any other actions?
No other actions. I received a review memo from Mr. Klausert. I spoke with Kelly yesterday to ask permission to release both his memo and my response memo to Brogan, and I have received approval from them to do that. So I'll be submitting documentation. God bless you.
I will be out of town on the 6th. I don't know if that puts a crimp in anything.
The 8th.
I'm going to be out of town from Saturday to Saturday. I won't come back until the 13th.
Okay, well that leaves three of us.
John?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. We're good. I mean, self-praise, you know, but we're-
Yes, yes, of course.
We're good, okay. So June 8th, okay.
Okay. All right. Again, if the board has any other questions, I'm more than willing to stay and answer them. But my main goal here tonight was again to introduce myself and to lay out that timeline and see if it was acceptable.
Okay. It's good.
Okay.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Brogan.
Are the Raccanellos here?
Yes, sir.
Come on in.
On call is my son Joseph.
Hi Carl, hi Joseph. So this is a pre-application meeting for site plan application to move a garage. Our number is PB 1509, and it's at 16 North Madison. 16 is north of John?
South. Oh, north, yeah.
It's south of John.
South of John.
It's one house in from the corner of John Street.
Oh, I have a...
It's on the same block as the Yes Salon Shapers and the-
That's John. This is the main street up here.
The House of the Quakers.
Yes, okay. So it's wa- oh, this is, is this the-
Market Plaza.
This is Market Plaza.
Right, yes, we bought it from Mark.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, I see. That helps. Do you want to move the garage further from the lot?
The reason why we want to move it is a large maple, about 50 foot, and that's what's causing, that's what caused the old garage to rot. And it don't get any sun, and we don't want to tear down the maple, which we think is, you know, it's a beautiful tree where the head is destroyed at. So we have plenty, it's a double lot. We have plenty of room. We just wanted to start the garage at the rear of the old garage, and that would keep it in, I've been watching the sun, and it would keep it in a sunny, you know, sunny area all day.
Okay. And then you would move the driveway?
Well, the driveway-
There's no curb cut?
No, there's no curb. It's all grass on the outside. Basically, we would keep the same width of the driveway.
And it would extend to the garage.
It would just go on an angle a little.
I see.
Like this.
Right, so-
That's, that's the street.
This would remain the same, and then you would just bring it this way?
That's right, exactly. We curve in to meet the garage.
I wonder, is there any DPW impact here? Would anybody require an actual curb cut? There's no curb.
There's no curb. And they're not, and they're not actually changing. So probably not. Since they're not changing where this comes out, it's not going to affect them.
I'm ignorant of the law with respect to the angle, and I think it seems like it's private.
Yeah, I would imagine it's-
Mr. Travis came out to see the old garage. The old garage is definitely not structurally sound anymore. I was a fireman for 27 years in New York. I inspected buildings myself. You could see it's, I'm not afraid, but it's dangerous to go on a roof cap, you know, to- You could see it's-
A mayor gives the answer, this is-
It's probably fine.
Mr. Litten, do you have any questions or points to make?
The people that have put in of the garage is Gray Woodwards. They're New Falls construction people. They're right on 299.
Okay, well I guess we should go back to building department and-
Well, the reason why they're here is to see what they need on their complete application. So what from the site plan checklist can be waived?
Well, I think that's up to a building inspector. You frown.
Yes, because when Rich Stephens came, he needed planning board approval to waive the topo. So that, and I think in the code it states that the planning-
We didn't give him approval to, we told, at the pre-application meeting, we did say that we didn't think we needed it. But the building department is the one that has to execute the part of the code to say that this is what's necessary. What items are you saying are-
Well, because right now we have a checklist for anything that needs site plan approval and to be complete, and needs to have everything on that checklist. And obviously, this does not need everything on the checklist, in my opinion. So they are here to see what-
I think the building inspector would be the best suited to determine what things need to be on the site plan, because he made a visit. He knows what the building permit has to say.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would say, I'm willing to go along with, I guess if I was going to deliver a message to the building inspector, it would be that we understand this is a straightforward request to move the garage. It doesn't impact any setbacks. They're doing it for the right, you know, the reasons sound, the reasons that they've given make a lot of sense. And given the relative simplicity of this, the building inspector should use their judgment, and we, and at least I would, I would concur with that.
So in that case, if the building inspector were to review the application that you have for you today and said it was complete, then it could technically then be before the board two weeks for a complete application?
For determination of completeness?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Okay. So there's nothing that you see right now that you feel this plan needs? You just want the building inspector-
We're not, Brogan, this is not a time when we can make determinations that have any, any final impact on anything. We're not going to take any action. We can't do anything that's binding here. We have to rely on the building inspector to, who has visited the site, who knows what the construction is going to be. We have to rely on his best judgment and his expertise to say what should be needed on the site plan. That's what I see. What do you think?
I mean, for purposes of the planning board, there's nothing here, there's no lighting associated with this. There's no electricity involved. I can see from here that the distances are sufficient to meet the kinds of things we need to think about.
You know, we're, we're struggling in part because, because the law was changed fairly recently to include single and two-family homes, new construction, and anything that requires a building permit now requires a site plan. We're not, we're not that happy with how it's falling out, with some things that seem to be very minor. And this may be there, but, but it does bear some review by us, I think. But we're, we're trying to figure out how to do this. And for now at least, this application seems to be simple enough, and I think the building inspector has every piece of information that he would need to be able to tell us, or tell you what should be on your site plan. And if there's anything that's, that's missing, when, when we look at it, when our attorney looks at it, we'll, we'll tell you then. But, you know, for the most part-
My last question is just, do you feel as though, because I know this is a question the building inspector has asked about this specific application. Do you feel as though it's okay to be on the sketch survey that is in on currently? Or would you like a stamped engineered plan?
If it's going to be a site plan, there are requirements for a site plan. But I don't, I don't need anything else now. I can't see any reason why, but I would want the building inspector to make determination of what's necessary. From, from what I see here, there's, I don't think there are any drainage implications. I don't think there's any, certainly isn't any lighting. If it were a site plan review, we might be looking for landscaping things, but I don't see that in this case. But I'll be happy to speak with the building inspector and-
That might be helpful.
You guys know you'll have to, before you demolish or build, even though there's, you'll need to contact the Department of Public Works, and they'll come out and mark if there are any buried lines.
Well, they do have to, the building inspector.
Yeah, they do, kind of, building inspector. They'll let you know all that. But if you haven't done that.
Well, that's, he has a contractor.
Oh, okay. So will they do that?
It's safe, Rich.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, you're right. Sorry about that. Got it. So, no problem. So don't worry about that.
So no, we just have to wait?
You should, you should visit the building inspector and-
You've been talking to Rich Travis?
Yes.
So he's in on Thursday. If you were able to stop by or give him a call, let him know how this went, and he could very well just look at this and say it's complete, and then I'll send it to the board. You guys can be on the agenda.
In the meantime, Brogan will have spoken to him, or have sent him a memo of what, he'll have a copy of the minutes, so he'll see what happened.
So do we, do we join on the second meeting with the board? Or does Rich Travis send the complete paperwork?
The next meeting with the board, you will come with whatever site plan information is necessary. Maybe your contractor will come. I don't know. It depends on how the building inspector determines you will have to perform this. But I don't think it's going to be a problem. This, we'll figure out the timing when you come back with the plan.
Sound script?
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Here, PB 1510, subdivision for 64 Plains Road. Can you pronounce your name, Crochito?
That's fine, yeah.
How would you like to say it?
Crochito, Crochito.
Crochito.
Yeah. Hi, nice to meet you all.
I have these, because there's only a couple, so if you wanted to detail your, go ahead and point them out.
You know, I actually brought something that might be a little bit better after considering what I had submitted to you all. It struck me as might be a little confusing, so I may have-
Things are supposed to be confusing.
Well, I'm going to see if this makes it any simpler or easier.
Nick, may I ask you a question before we get started? I don't recognize you, but that doesn't mean I haven't seen you before. My recollection is that Discovery Institute came to a planning board a few years ago for a subdivision to isolate a house that was on the property and to sell it separately from the rest of the property. Are you aware of that?
I don't think so. There was a subdivision that happened, which might be what you're referring to, but I'm not sure.
Do you remember anything?
No.
Who saw my one?
Yes, we had a, one of our discussions was very sketchy, very-
And it went anywhere?
Never went anywhere. Nope, never came back. But very off the cuff.
Feel forgiven, Mr. Chairman. I was on board at that time.
I did, yeah. It's such a-
And that's my recollection.
Okay, good. Good, all right. I didn't remember how it went, but okay.
Well, you know, I was going to say maybe you're speaking of this subdivision here, but this is actually a really old survey, 1990s.
Yeah. Where is Plains Road?
Here.
Okay. My recollection is there was something back here. Maybe there's your house, but-
There is a house. In fact, this is one of the things that I've submitted, which we'll be talking about. It could be that.
And have you met with our building department, building inspector?
I had the pleasure of speaking with Brogan, who suggested that I come to this preapproval meeting.
I think Mark also, Mark looked at your site plans.
Yeah, and Mark looked at these, what I had drawn on here, which-
And what did Mark tell you?
Well, there are several different areas. And principally what he said was, come to a meeting, make as clear as you can what, what you would like to do, and present it, and see, you know, what people's thoughts are. I know where you're at.
Okay, so present away.
Okay, so, Brogan, did you, that email that I sent you?
Yep. Everyone, yeah, I distributed it, and it's in everyone's packet.
Okay. So then I can kind of refer to that, yeah, as we go. So to start, I want to thank you all for taking your time with me tonight. I'll see if I can move through this as quickly as I can. So on existing Lot 1, which if you flip up the tracing paper, it's the center one that's shaded. The idea there would be to create this long slanted lot, which includes house number 2, which I think is what Maurice might have been referring to, which is the only house in that part of the property. You'll see that I've called it out. It's 50 feet wide, which I believe is the correct amount of footage that's needed, and it runs back and goes around that house, house number 2. The principal challenge that I think I see with this is that Da Vinci Way comes down. And at the moment, the arrangement there between Jeremiah, Glenn, and Helen, which are the three houses that I sort of sketched out there on the left side of your drawing, are all people that know each other and who have a connection with Discovery Institute. So it's kind of informal. And at the moment, you see that this is drawn in by me. There's a line running up the middle of Da Vinci Way, which really is a flag lot that contains Helen's house. So is that clear to everybody?
Oh, okay, I see.
Triggering my dicey drawing. So basically Glenn and Helen share that road, and it's-
And it's been formally shared, or is there an easement?
I don't know, actually. And that just came up in a conversation the other day. Is how, how informal is it? Is there a piece of paper?
That would have to be known.
I think Da Vinci Way is considered a private road, not a public road.
Yeah, but it's probably a driveway then, and it perhaps to have to have some sort of shared maintenance or some, something.
As would Jeremiah.
Yeah. So I will find that out, and I'm sorry that I don't have the answer to that now. It actually just came up with somebody that I was talking with.
Just a clarification. Their three parcels are three separate DED parcels, is this what?
Yes.
So even those hand-drawn lines, if these are three separate DED parcels?
They are, they are. I didn't have a survey map for their property, so that was still traced off of Google Earth. So what we, what I think I would like to see happen is that whatever easement is in place, could it be expanded to allow the owners of house number 2 to utilize Da Vinci Way as well? And if there isn't, is that possible? Because you, while there's a 50-foot bit of road frontage there, it would be sort of peculiar to run a long driveway up off that road. And the use of Da Vinci Way seems more appropriate, particularly if you see the actual condition as it exists.
I have a question. The yellow area that's on Helen's lot?
Yeah.
What does that represent?
This, you'll, you'll see, I have also in that, that email that I got forwarded to you, is at the moment those cars, you know, anytime during the day, for the most part all night, are parked on our property. So it's the intention of Frank, who's the director of Discovery, to speak to Helen and see if this is something that she would be interested in doing, which I think that would be called a lot line revision.
Subdivision, we call it a subdivision.
Subdivision. It would be moved so that there was at least parking, you know, for those cars. So while they would share the use of Da Vinci Way, they would be parking on the parcel on which house 2 sat.
But house 2 is practically on the property line as it presently sits, yes?
Yes, it is.
So that's a pre-existing condition. My question to the, to the inspectors would be if there were a change in the property line, a subdivision, that was agreeable with Helen, then, then the setbacks then kick in. And would that be sufficient property to make it a proper setback?
If I, if I had to guess, I would say yes. I believe at the moment it's 12 and a half feet. So what I-
Well, yeah, offhand, I don't know what the zoning is there, you know.
This is in an area called R2.
R2, okay.
And the information that I got from Mark, I believe was that it was 12 and a half feet. Then, right, yeah.
Is it considered the size of the house?
Uh-huh.
This would be considered the size?
It's in the size. The frontage is out here.
The front is the frontage. Okay, yes, so yeah, 12 and a half.
And by definition, the rear is opposite the front. And you've got many sides, but-
Okay, so yes, so 12.
The big question here, where do you put a septic on this blue lot?
The septic is in existence, and it is, I would say, 2/3 within the blue line that I drew there, coming from the road.
Where are you going to put it once it's its own lot?
Well, one, one idea that came up would be to jog it around the septic. But again, what I got from Mark was that it is done, that a new property line will go through an existing leach field, and that it's somehow included in the wording, that when it, when it needs to be redone, that then it is moved fully onto the existing lot.
It's my understanding we can't create a lot that doesn't have its own waters or either hooked up to the village systems or has its own on the lot.
That's my understanding, but you know, we don't-
I would be really uncomfortable in having a septic on, half of the septic on someone else's lot.
I felt that way too.
No matter how good of buddies they are now, who is going to buy it later on?
I, I agree. That's the same reaction I had.
Well, we have to prove it's buildable. Figure out, which shows you can put a septic on that lot. Whether, put it there or not, we can discuss.
And what is this unmarked white?
That's actually a house.
That is a house.
That is a house, yeah.
So there's two houses, there's, at the moment, there's four houses in this whole lot?
Rich, the, when you say you have to prove that you can put one there-
New York State Patent Laws, they're called the Patent Laws. You can't create a lot that's not buildable. And in order to be buildable, it has to have water and sewer. We have to have water and sewer from the village, and we have to have it from the site. You've got municipal water here, correct?
Yes.
So that's easy. Now you've got to prove that you can put the septic on this lot. Now, when it goes on, we can discuss, some of the building inspector can discuss. But we can't create a lot that we can't prove we take a septic.
Even though there's one that exists there?
But it exists on another lot, or at least part on another lot. It's got to be able to exist.
Okay. Well, I've seen some kooky lines on survey maps. Could we literally jog around the existing leach field?
Aren't there offset, are there offset requirements for a leach field?
No. They can be in setbacks.
It doesn't, setbacks don't apply to leach field?
No, the problem is however, when you're creating a septic field, you've got to be able to show two. You've got to be able to show the existing septic field, and you've got to be able to show a backup reserve. And I'm just looking at the configuration of the slot thinking, I don't know how you can do that.
Rich, how would, how would that be determined?
Well, this is a three bed amount.
Yes.
So 40 by 60 times 2. But I'm not the health department.
Yeah, I think we're in danger.
Yeah, it's pretty dangerous for me to quote you.
I would like you to get this information from the building inspector, or when you come back for a site plan review, we will have an attorney here. And you have other resources, such as the health department, that the building inspector will refer you to.
Okay. That was the real question, how, who can help me nail that down? Okay.
It's not us.
And proof that Helen is in on the deal. Not, not that you just say, oh, by the way, we're going to sign this because we're going to take this chunk of land.
Oh, no, no, absolutely. Yeah, and the parking thing I'm seeing as a separate, separate effort to get her to, I mean, and I think what's going to happen is Discovery's going to offer to buy it and make it part of this parcel, and then this parcel, assuming that the septic business can be worked out, will be sold. Okay, so, so I will contact both the building inspector and the health department to get them to what, come out and, and look at the situation? Okay, so, so I will contact both the building inspector and the health department to get them to, what, come out and, and look at the situation?
Or where your engineers going to be, and do it.
And house number three ends up being on the same lot as house number two?
Well, that's...
You'll have to do that for all the lots, by the way, all the lots will have to be able to show water and sewer.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, well, this is a question, I drew it in as a blue dotted line, this one has the same issue, uh, in terms of its use of Da Vinci Way, but in, in a, in a slightly more pronounced way, the access to house number three would be to utilize this driveway, which currently runs between house number three and Helen, Helen's house. So, uh, Discovery's first choice would be to have house three on its own parcel, which based on the, this, what we just talked about, about the sewage requirements, it feels impossible.
At that size. And, and without, I'm concerned about the adequacy of the driveway. Da Vinci Way is, looks long and narrow, and to have access from three properties, is that right?
It already is access for three properties, and now you're proposing two additional properties?
It's not three properties, it's, it's, it's...
Well, yeah, Da Vinci Way is owned in half by Helen all the way to the road, so Jeremiah only owns that half, but he has, probably has a right of way.
I think the words that are not necessarily right when you say owns, because I, I don't know that there is an agreement, there's an actual agreement or a line, or that this half is owned by them, and I, I don't, I don't know how it's really legally configured, but...
Well, I think that you're raising a point that this, it's not visible on this map, but there are two other homes off to your left, where Da Vinci Way, as you can see, it scoops off to the left and disappears, there are two other homes there that share the use of Da Vinci Way as well.
So is, is there an agreement in existence for the shared use of Da Vinci Way?
I don't know, that's what Rich, uh, Maurice was talking about earlier, I can, this came up, but I can find that out. I don't know if there's an actual easement on record, or if it's just a handshake type of situation. But I'll find that out.
This is very, um, interesting and, um, and complex. And I'm uncomfortable with its, uh, with the vagueness of the information that we have and the complexity of what you're trying to do without having better information and better expert advice, like an attorney, like the building inspector...
Or even a surveyor.
Doing a good review of this with a survey with, with, with really good information. To do a subdivision blind like this, we would never be able to do that. Never. So, I think you should work with the building inspector to figure out what information would be required to do a full subdivision application.
Okay.
And, um, if you have engineers working with you, have them be in contact with the building inspector, and they'll work together to figure out what, what's necessary. This is a very complex project, I think.
I think you're on to something, because we haven't even talked at the beginning about the pink and the red lines. Those, don't, actually, those might be easier. This thing with Da Vinci Way, I don't even know this business, but I, I can see that there are complexities there. So Maurice, um, to, to help me, uh, to have a better discussion, I get information about how legal is this easement if there is an easement, right? We get somebody from the health department to help determine whether or not this, this lot could...
You have to have an engineer do this.
An engineer?
An engineer has to do this, yes, someone who knows the requirements for septic systems, they have to design it. They have to make sure it conforms to code, and they'll have it inspected or signed off on by the health department. I'm not sure how that actually works, the building inspector knows that better than I do.
Okay, all right, so I need to, I, it feels like I need to...
But I think you need an engineer, not, I mean, if, if, if you're trying to do this without an engineer, I think you're opening yourself up to a lot of trouble. That's just my opinion.
Does the rest of the board care?
I couldn't prove, I couldn't prove it without an engineer system on here, I mean, how would you know it worked?
This is not a, a meeting where we can tell you what we would agree to at any point. We're, um, you know, we're, we're here to try to figure out what it is you're trying to do and give you, uh, ideas of where to get the information that you need, but I think you need an engineer to design this for you. Doing it the way you've done it, I think, uh, isn't gonna be adequate for almost any application we'd make here.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, I mean, that's...
Proposed lot four, I don't, would be a lot for what? I don't, you know, to me, if it's too small, it'd be buildable. So why are you creating it?
Well, again, I'm, I'm speaking, you know, out of, out of my depth, but I did some cursory measurements, and based on the seven thousand two hundred and sixty feet that are required to build, uh, that, that's, is a, is actually a bit more than that. So that, that would be the first piece, to get the square footage. What I just learned was that you have to have certain requirements for the septic as well, but I, but I would imagine that if they call out seventy-two sixty, that, that that is a workable starting point anyway, so, so that's what that was about. But it seems like, go ahead.
But a lot of the R2 lots in the middle have municipal water and sewer, so...
Most.
Most do, this is, you're, since, because of the location of this piece of land, but it's still in the village.
We have very few lots that have septic.
Yeah, there are very few that have septic. And so as a result, that's not a concern in terms of the lot size.
Okay, so then, all right, so this, this may not even be feasible, or it would have to be quite a bit larger?
But I, I agree, I mean, in, in addition to the engineer for the issues around septic, I also feel that, um, a professionally drawn map that, um, will make it much easier for us to have a conversation with you, and, and that map will also then be contained within it, all the considerations that we've been discussing, because an engineer will definitely think about septic and, and other factors, so...
And would know, for instance, that seventy-two sixty may work in the village, but may not work here, okay, okay. And then, so the, the next one would be what I've drawn in red, the schoolhouse, uh, has a septic on its own, it has its own water, and it is fully within the red lines that I drew, which provide fifty feet of road frontage out of Plains Road.
Again, though, once it becomes a lot on its own, it has to meet the requirements. So if it only, it only has one current septic, it's gotta not show current standards.
Okay, by square footage, so this is again engineer territory, is that right?
The whole thing is, as I said, this is very complex, and I think you need someone who will be able to make good sense of this and advise you properly. We can't do that.
Well, no, this is...
And the building inspector will be able to guide you, uh, both in terms of what resources are available to you, health department, and, you know, you'll have to find yourself an engineer, whether you need an architect or not, I don't, I don't know, but this is a very complex application.
Okay, well, I, I think this has been a great pre-app, and, yeah, this is the information that I need, you know, to, uh, to move ahead. Okay, so, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna bother speaking about that final line, which is green, because it's already...
We're gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, take out the rubber stamp. You need an engineer, you guys should have a stamp like that. Okay.
Do you want this back?
Sure, sure, why don't I take the back? Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all for your input, and...
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having me, and we look forward to seeing you next time with, uh, more detailed information and, uh, be able to answer some of these questions. But it sounds to me like, as the engineer went through the process, he would be saying, this lot needs to be bigger, change that. I don't, I hope, anyway, depending on how much we pay him, that he doesn't send me in here with something that doesn't answer all these questions.
That wouldn't be good.
Make, make it clear. So, and then also, just for my own education, if, if I, when I produce, or the engineer produces this document, and I come before you, at that point, do you say, okay, we'll give our go-ahead, now you need to go to somebody else, what's...
It depends on what is on the application, and the building department will guide you through what's necessary. You probably don't need variances, but maybe you will, given whatever the engineer says, or the building inspector says. Uh, but for the most part, you'll come here with, uh, with an, an application for a subdivision. If there, um, if there are other inspections that have to be done, that will be noted by the building department, and, uh, and that will be the, the way it works. When we, when we get the application, that the building department says is complete, we'll determine, we'll make our own determination for our own purposes that it's complete, and then we'll schedule a public hearing, and, and then we'll go, our attorney will look at it. If we feel that our engineer has to look at it too, he will do that as well. And, and that'll be, yeah, so it'll be another two or three meetings, I would say.
At two-week intervals?
Not necessarily, it could be more. Because it, we could ask for more information that will take you some time to, to do. But the, the interval between us determining that something is complete and a public hearing should be two weeks. But until we determine it's complete, because something may be uncovered when we, when we get the application from you, we don't know how long that will take you to perform it.
Sure, sure, okay, and then, and then the public hearing, is that the final step, I'm sorry?
That's the final step, yes, but that may, that may not be over in one meeting, but often it is.
And I think you have a, a can of worms with the adjoining owners, because you're, you're trying to, because you don't know what the status of that driveway is that services three to five houses.
Right.
That may, you're now wanting to service two more houses. Yeah. And, and the research of that should be something that the engineer...
Who is the owner of the property?
Discovery Institute.
And you represent them?
Well, I wouldn't go that far, I'm here at the meeting.
Who brought you there, what's your, what's your...
My dad is the director of the institute, so I've been asked to do this. So whenever you go, yeah, I represent them.
So, but, yeah, when you do an application, you'll have to, you'll have to formally say that you're representing, you'll have to let Alan sign it.
I think he did this when you signed the, the paper.
Oh, he did, yeah, I do represent him.
Yeah, okay. I wanted to ask a question, and then?
Sure.
Um, so,
you don't need to answer this for me, but it looks as if you have, you have lots of lines in different places, and you seem to be, you have certain objectives.
Yeah.
So, as you're interviewing engineers, make clear to them what your objectives are, because as, I think, one of the take-home messages here is that you may have to make some adjustments in your proposed lot lines in order to meet requirements you weren't aware of with the engineers. So if you have some flexibility on the site in terms of whatever it is you're trying to accomplish with this subdivision, just make sure your engineer is clear about that, and they can work with you as you go through the process. That'll make it a lot easier when you come back to us.
Okay, okay, good, thank you, sure, thank you for...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Is there Mr. Goldman in the house? Okay, so we have a ZBA referral about this, we met Mr. Goldman a couple of meetings ago, right?
Yes.
Uh, and he wants to, um, make two retail stores out of one. And, um, he was told he needs a variance. So they referred it to us for our, um, opinion. So what, what think is the...
I don't have any problem with the variance in that it's been a commercial, square footage, a big commercial space under one user, not multiple users, but we're not adding to the commercial space here. What I do have a problem, however, is stepping into that building. Right now, there is a very small vestibule area to step up to the door to get into the one space that exists. If he's gonna create two spaces, I want to make sure that we've got enough of a vestibule space to accommodate.
But wouldn't they have to see a site plan?
Yep.
So that's where that guy's taken care of, right?
It should, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're saying to the ZBA before they, to make it clear to them that that's gonna be something we're gonna look at here, is, we...
Well, I, I mean, that's, that's part of site review.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what we do, right, that's our, yeah, that's what we do.
That's what we do. I don't have any, but then, I don't, I don't... As of all we do, I have no problem in that it's not a change of the amount of commercial space.
Yeah, the only thing, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Litten?
You know, I was looking at this in, to your point, Rich, I think he actually discussed with his, part of his plans were to eliminate one of those, um, window settings to create a second entrance and vestibule area. But again, we won't be able to tell anything until we decide.
But that's not part of our discussion for tonight, I just wanna know what you think of the idea of creating two retail spaces out of one. Is there anything that you'd like to tell the ZBA?
No, I, I think it's fine, I hate to see it divided up into smaller spaces, ever smaller spaces, but, um, I understand, you know, the, the need and desire to do that, so you have two tenants in there.
Let's go, we can have, we can have a nail place, and then...
The video store.
Video, that's right. VCR.
I have some serious reservations about splitting this thing down the middle. The dimensions on here, I don't know if these are exterior dimensions or interior dimensions. I'm assuming they're exterior dimensions of the property line. Um, it, it's an existing building, so thirty-two feet wide is the absolute max that it is. Split in half, that means that each, uh, store is only sixteen feet wide, and, and for safety's sake, what would the fire department say about something that's that long and narrow? In addition to it, sixteen feet is not what it would be, because the exterior walls are a certain thickness of, of an older building, then there has to be an, a, a, a fire code acceptable wall that would split these two in half. So, uh, you know, what are you gonna have, a, a fourteen-foot-wide store? And do, would we wanna do that for, again, safety's sake? I, I think that this is something that we might wanna run past the fire department, you know, the fire, fire code folks.
I'm, I'm missing the, um, safety, what's the safety issue?
It's fire code safety.
I see that it's narrow.
Yes.
But what's the, uh...
You would only have one exit.
Well, there's probably a rear exit.
Twelve feet off the ground.
Yeah?
Oh, right, right, that's true.
I mean, if it's on fire, hey, I'd jump, but, um, that, that's, I mean...
Isn't that true now, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't, and I, and there's another story above that, that's, at least one more story above it, that's apartments, I don't know if it's two more or not. So perhaps there is, uh, an existing fire escape, but I, I don't know where that would be.
Now, is this, um, so the, the area variance...
Well, they're, they're asking for almost double what they're going to cut it in half of what the allowed is, I mean, that's one hell of a variance.
Of what the what is, of what the allowed?
Of what, right, of what...
You need two thousand five hundred square feet for...
You need two, per store. And they have less than that to start with. So, for each store, they would need five thousand square feet. But they only have this. So they would have to have, they would have to have a variance for each one that's more than the total square footage. You know, I mean, it's a very large variance that they would have to, yeah, and, and...
A twenty-eight hundred square, twenty-eight hundred square foot variance on a twenty-one hundred square foot...
Right. And, and, uh, I, I don't know the thinking of the people who created the rules, saying that you need a certain amount of square footage per, and I sympathize with, uh, him wanting to have, um, two stores instead of just one, however, um... I I.
Brogan, when is the ZBA meeting?
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
If we have a building that has multiple offices in it, is that one use or multiple office uses? If we have a store that's twenty-three hundred square feet or two. Well, it's the same square footage. It's two uses. Is there really any difference?
I think because of the site, it's not like.
We're not adding, we're not adding to the amount.
Right, we're not making two lots out of.
Right.
You know, here's, I I don't. I don't really know. I mean, the the ZBA has to determine if the variance is too big or not. That's their job.
But they're asking our opinion.
They're not asking our opinion about how big the variance is. That's not, that's not ours to give. We we have planning issues. And the planning issue I see is. Is it is it beneficial to the village to have? One new type of, the availability of two businesses instead of one? There's additional parking that may be required for this. I don't know. As far as fire safety, that's not our call. That's the building inspector. That's the. You know, that's that's what they do. That's the way I understand it.
So I think from an economic and sort of downtown point of view, this is a, this is perfectly okay.
It couldn't be beneficial.
We we have other examples of small. Small retail places on Main Street. They're very successful and have been there a number of years.
Is it this small?
Mexico City was probably.
Yeah, Mexico City was that small?
We just approved building two-story restaurant. It's not much bigger.
Width wise, yeah.
Width wise.
How much?
I don't know. Just saying, you know, it's bigger overall.
That's only, that's only thirteen feet wide on the inside?
Well, I'm gonna say it's just not that much bigger. Oh, no, twenty-three hundred square feet. Isn't this building twenty-three hundred?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
My feeling is it's still the same use, it's still the same amount of square footage being used. In fact, if two people are using it instead of one person using it?
Well, you know, one thing that is that is somewhat concerning to me, but it's not my money. Is who is going to rent something that's that small? What can you put in there? Right? I mean, if you have counters.
Well, the Goldsmith is is one-ten. He's interested in moving in there. He's currently in a very small space.
Yeah.
Out of the way, an academy, and this would give him. Much more foot traffic coming in.
How big is the record store downtown?
Jack's? Oh, it's bigger.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rhino's probably.
Rhino's not much bigger.
Rhino's is probably not much bigger than this.
But it's more square than.
True.
Narrow. And narrow.
So the Goldsmith doesn't need a lot of retail footage.
All those little, those little things that are up there though. Candy store and the ice cream store that are next door to the the record shop.
Yeah, Sweet is.
Sweet, yeah.
And the the notice of determination from the code enforcement officer, it does not. Bring up any fire or safety issues, but that's still something that I would want an answer to.
But isn't it their job, Liz?
Yes, it is, but perhaps it's an oversight. It it's not addressed either way, so. I would want reassurance that it that had been taken into consideration.
Could we put that, I mean, if we agree that to give a positive recommendation, could we put that in our letter?
I'm not positive, but from my understanding, if something gets approved by the planning board and then it goes to Rich or Marv's desk. Doesn't mean that it gets approved by them.
Well, we're not approving anything, Brogan.
Well, I mean hypothetically.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm just trying to give you a visual of the timeline of the process.
You're you're saying once we approve a site plan or a special use permit. Building inspector hasn't issued a building permit yet.
Correct.
And that's got to go through all the inspections.
Yep, the building permit is contingent on fire safety.
Has to go through fire.
Right.
Health department if necessary.
So all we're doing is is making an agreement in general that we think that this plan is a good idea in terms of.
Okay, but if we know ahead of time that the fire, that that there would be fire code problem, then why waste this guy's time?
That's the only, that's his responsibility, not ours, I think. I mean, he has to know what he's doing. You know, I I don't know that I would do it if I owned this property. I don't know that I would do it. I I think I'd rather have one tenant who would be able to use the space. As opposed to have to have two.
Well, yeah.
And look for two and, but I don't know. He he said, I think, that he was having trouble renting the space at that size.
Yeah, at that rental rate.
Yeah, yeah, nobody wants it.
Well, what if somebody came in and wanted to co-share that space as one space? I'll sell fresh fruit, you sell vitamins.
Right, and and without the wall in between.
Yeah.
What's the difference with the wall?
But that's up to, that's not our job. That's the 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 owner's. The owner's choice is all that's, all that we have to work with. We can't suggest that he runs business any differently. Or rent it to different people, I expect that. We can say that a use. Isn't good, and we have that in the code now. We have what uses are permitted in the B two district. And it's up to the, it's up to the building department to say that we'll issue, we'll issue a building permit. And a CO.
So really, we shouldn't, we should wait until the ZBA makes their determination before we say anything?
We have to wait until we get an application.
I mean, although we could choose to say nothing now. It's just a recommendation to the ZBA, but it carries some weight.
You know, I don't have.
So they they are asking for a recommendation one way or the other.
Yes, but if we say nothing, then that's tested approval. So I mean, if we, you know, there are five of us, so we can have a vote. And if there's a message that the majority of us would like to send to the ZBA, like we think you should have. Fire inspection first, or we we think it's stupid to have such a small place and. People aren't going to jump twelve foot out the back door, you know, whatever you want to say, if the majority want to say it, then we'll say that. But our job, the way I understand this, our job in giving a recommendation to ZBA. Is to add planning components. To the application, to the area variance application. To make sure that we don't have anything. That's going to ZBA that we think is a terrible planning idea. And they shouldn't, they shouldn't grant a variance because. It's a, it's a, it's a bad use for that part of the street or something like that.
I'm not, I don't know what they're going to use it for.
That's right, we don't know.
And I don't. My concern is that it's too small of a space. For safety reasons. Fire code.
And the fire code comes later by the building inspector. We don't do that.
It may be interesting to look at all the properties and see who is and who is not complying with the twenty-five hundred square foot. And if the weather could be changed.
Let's hear from everybody else. Mr. Stephens, I think you you said something I'd like to repeat in the second.
My my feeling is that they're not asking for any change in the amount of square footage. That that this be allowed to be.
But yes, they are asking for a change in the amount of square footage because the amount of square footage is going to be split in half. So in my definition, they, that is a change in square footage.
Well, one plus one will equal two. It'll be the same square footage.
In terms of the site.
In terms of the site.
Only in terms of the site.
Correct.
Right, not. They're trying to create an internal two buildings. By, because a wall will go through and there'll be two separate stores.
Also, I wrote, I'm going to make it, was there a gate going through? Would it make a difference if it was a? You know, an agreement that went through? The fact is that that square footage is going to be. Of a commercial use, that square footage is commercial use now, nearly a commercial use later. Whether it be one business or a cooperative business of several other entrepreneurs or two separate entrepreneurs or three separate entrepreneurs. I mean, we approved that the bar business is jarred. I never thought you could make a bar business work in a closet. It's still operating. In a closet. Have you been in that thing?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a nice closet.
So my feeling is that, yes, Morris, if if they are not. Adding to the square footage of the building, not increasing this commercial square footage that is presently there. Then how do they use the square footage on the inside? As long as we meet health, safety, fire code, building codes.
And that we have to assume will be met.
Well, has to be met.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's not our decision.
Right.
Mr. Zeller.
As I said, I think economically it's, appears he thinks it's advantageous. I think. There are examples of small businesses downtown that are working and so I'm fine recommending.
I think it adds to the vibrancy of the village to have another type of business there. If it's another tattoo parlor or another.
We won't control that either.
Yogurt.
But we have.
We don't control that either.
But that's not our purview to sit to be, maybe he wants to have another. We, you just said we don't have any say in that matter.
I'm saying the potential is to increase the variety of stores to village consumers. I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm ready to, I'm happy to make a recommendation that we.
Why don't you make a motion?
Uh, make a motion that we recommend to the ZBA to consider granting this variance for. ZBA fifteen oh one at seventy-one Main Street.
Thank you. Grab a second.
I'll second.
Is ready for discussion?
I, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I oppose.
Check it, please. Motion passes. Uh, let's do the minutes, since I don't have to do anything, but yes.
Mike Risen is here because of the North Chestnut Business District discussion. So since he owns the STS property, are we going to? Talk about that tonight? Since it was on the agenda, yes.
He's been pretty patient, too.
Okay, well.
Everyone, the email Michael that makes sense is in everyone's pocket, too, just for reference.
Is that okay? It's on the agenda, so that's okay. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't really pay much attention to the agenda. I did see it. And I know that you had written something a while back.
Yeah.
About the potential for new applications, but this is something different.
Well, what I had.
You you found some inadequacies and.
Of course, some inconsistencies, yeah, right.
Alcohol.
Sure.
So, yeah, so is that different from this discussion?
No.
Okay.
I just, I had mentioned it at the last meeting anticipating that. That an application or whatever is probably on the horizon, you know. And so I wanted to see if there were in fact issues with. The code as it's currently written, if we could get the village board to, if we agreed and our attorney agreed, that we could get some. So I mean, it might be tonight. I think that all we want to do is if we consider referring it to our attorney.
Well, yeah, I.
Now, maybe that's the only step we take tonight.
That really has to be done. I I want, you know, we've been doing the piecemeal whack-a-mole.
I know, but I I understand I.
And and I understand how every time we do it, we have a good reason to do it. And I understand that every time we do it, we say we've done that because this thing, now this thing's popped up. But anyhow.
Well, so.
I agree, if we take the North Chestnut Gateway District.
Right.
As as a whole, I'd say that's a distinct piece of code.
Exactly.
Then then we could do that. I've I've asked. Mark to to give us his suggestions for code changes in a broader scope.
Yeah, so that was a pretty big topic.
And all of this. Would really benefit us to have a good discussion with George and Mark and Rich and and us and and Tom.
Me?
Tom. Planning member emeritus, yes, thank you. So I would love to do that. I would love to do that. And as far as. Would you like to tell us what you think of? What do you?
Well, yeah, if I could address the void about what's happening, then maybe that would help. Clear up in my mind where I'm headed. And maybe help you guys figure out.
It seems pretty level now.
Yeah, my name's Mike Risen. I own the property that the STS burned down on. I own the property next door, which is a parking.
The parking lot, right.
It's pretty common knowledge that the parking lot is not going to continue.
I didn't know that.
At the end of the year. The DOT is probably not going to, they haven't renewed the lease in a year and a half. They've been working on lease extensions and. They've never promoted the lot, so it's never got utilized. So it doesn't look like, you know, I I told them I can't keep going on with extension after extension. The county is interested in the property for the bus, the bus station. I found out that Thursday's meeting that they're discussing the last three options, I guess. I've had, I'm still working with the insurance company, so I don't even know where I stand at this point, but I've had a lot of developers. And realtors come to me with proposals. And the bill, first of all, like I said, building inspectors, both of them have been great since the fire. They've been very helpful. They reduced my stress level considerably. And they've been steering me down the road and they they basically said a lot of different things I could do there. I don't. Need a lot of approvals for because it is a fire loss and, but some of the other things that I'm starting to get proposals for. I I see in a gray area in the new code. I see contradictions in the new code.
See it every day.
And and I'm hoping I don't get caught in the transition period between B three and North Chestnut Street. And I don't know how the planning board is going to look at my situation because it was a fire loss and. I'm three months into this loss already and I haven't gotten any money and I haven't gotten any rent and, you know. I need to get something built or rented or leased or something as soon as possible. So actually tomorrow, they're going to, somebody's going to be drilling environment holes for environmental testing and.
Was there a basement there?
There was a basement under the showroom, yeah.
Under the showroom?
Yeah.
And that's, what what's there now, is it?
Uh, it was, been filled in. So I had an engineer look at it. We we brought, we did it to his specification and we filled it in, tamped it and everything. From what the building inspector tells me, it's ninety-five hundred square foot building. I don't need to keep that footprint and I can basically put ninety-five hundred square feet back there. Or maybe even more. I don't have to meet setbacks and anything like that because it's a loss and. But I think that all depends on what goes there and, you know, what the use is going to be. So I guess my question is, do I fall into the old B three, you know, guidelines still because it was a loss? Do I have to meet all the, you know, new?
We don't have a little.
We don't have B three anymore, except that the building inspector telling me since its grandfather clause in it, it's a loss, it's handled differently. So if I wanted to build.
I don't know that.
Yeah, well, if I wanted to build ninety-five hundred square feet right now, I could build it where it was or even so I could move it. And I wouldn't have to meet certain guidelines, so. And I talked to Mike about some of this and now people are starting to come with proposals and I don't know what to tell them. You know, it's going to be a long, hard battle. Or no, this is going to be easy, you know, so.
Nothing's easy here.
I know, I did the.
We don't rule it easy.
So. So I I wanted to come tonight because if you were discussing changes, I wanted to know what those changes are going to be. I see. We talked about the height restriction. One spot says it has to be.
Yeah.
You know, two stories and the next part says, no, it can be one story, but.
At this point, the only thing I can see cleaning up are those contradictions, self contradictions.
Right. Well, plus the uses is kind of, it's kind of gray. It used to be a nice schedule that you could go test through the whole schedule and.
Yeah, schedule's completely outdated.
And, yeah, it's out of date, but then, you know, when I talk to the building inspector and I run some ideas by him, he says, well, no, you can do that under this part of the. The uses, so it's very, it's very, a lot of gray area there. And I know it's going to be easier once I bring you a proposal, but some of the people that are asking me, you know, are bringing me proposals, don't want to be known yet, you know, so. I think in the next couple of weeks, I'll have somebody to, you know, to bring a proposal with, but. I I mostly tonight, I wanted to see what was going to get changed and see if it's going to affect me.
Well, the short answer is we don't know what's going to be changed. We have an idea of what we're going to go after. In the short term.
Right.
There are. I don't think this is airing on dirty laundry, but there are a lot of. There are, I don't think this is airing on dirty laundry, but there are a lot of problems in our code in general. It's also very out of date, as is our comprehensive plan. And to have the code rewritten from scratch without the benefit of an updated comprehensive plan is not good, not good, anything.
Oh, I understand all that, my problem is I don't wanna get caught up in all, you know?
Nobody does, really, and, you know, we would, we would like to insulate you from that. But I, I can't comment on because I don't know the legal answer to whether your grandfather did it because it's a loss. I, I don't understand that, maybe it is, maybe it's true, that's why we have an attorney. But I, I would say that we're, we're not interested now in making any sweeping changes to the North Chestnut Street Gateway District. That, um, we paid a planner to come up with that and it was approved by the village board and that's what's in place.
Right.
Uh, there are problems with it, as, as I was saying, and so our, our immediate interest is in fixing those problems.
Okay.
And not making sweeping changes that it's gonna.
So it sounds like once the, uh, application's in front of the planning board and we run into a roadblock because of the contradictions or the gray area in the code, then it's gonna have to be dealt with.
We cut the baby, yeah.
There's a lot of B three uses that are totally out of, out of that north district, you know, or Chestnut Street district that I, I don't think, and some of the talk about, you know, uh, business that a grandfather clause in having to meet certain guidelines down the road, I mean, that's, that's a harsh thing for a property owner to have to do. Plus, I don't know where the village thinks those kind of businesses should be. In the, in the summary, the report that was, you know, presented, they were saying those businesses, the car places and some of the other places are good sources of jobs for people and, you know, we, there's only eighteen locations, eighteen parcels in that whole district. To make it all like Main Street, well, you're gonna put stuff like car washes and, you know, so it's kinda, you know, I, I think it's good to have multiple uses, but, you know, you can't just throw out all the B three uses also, I mean, you know? But, so, uh, so I guess something's gonna get changed unless it gets.
Well, some things, we hope to be able to change some things quickly to make the code more consistent with itself and with the rest of the code.
Right.
But in terms of making philosophical changes or planning changes, I don't see that happening anytime soon.
Right.
Cause this is, this is, is new, I mean, compared to everything else, it's.
Well, for example, if I brought you an application right now and it said it was gonna be a one-story building and it wasn't gonna be twenty feet tall, I, you guys couldn't approve that.
It wouldn't be the first time that we got something that we had to apply against a code that was inadequate or self contradictory.
So what would happen at that point?
Beats the hell out of me, I mean.
The code would have to be changed before you can approve it?
No, we would have, our attorney would tell us what we should do. We might have to go to ZBA, we might have to go to the village board to make a change, it depends on what it is.
Okay.
I mean, knowing the intent of what the law, the, the new district is set up to and, and in this case, there's a whole report.
Yeah.
From which, so there's a substantial amount of information.
Yeah, I have that report.
Yeah, so I think.
That's like gold, actually, that's really good, that, to me, that, that.
Well, some of that, some of the stuff in that report.
Isn't helpful to you.
You know?
Oh, I see.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So many attention is, is got lost, you know, like.
And that, that's a good point, but that probably won't get changed right now, although that might lead to some, if there is inconsistencies, that might be used to help clarify, you know, or interpret a given opinion about what's actually the legal.
Okay. My concern is that, you know, if, if you have the latitude to interpret the code that's in place now, to permit something to come in without going through all the fancy process of changing the code, that's my concern. I mean, I don't have to wait a year for the code to get changed.
No, you, you won't.
Cause I know, I know right now, some of the people that account to me, we have a problem already, you know?
We can't make you wait a year.
Right.
We, we have to do something unless the village board were to declare moratorium on any development in, in B three and then, and then you have to wait.
Right.
But right now, I don't, I don't know of any reason why that would happen.
And is it the building inspector's, um, uh, he makes a determination of what, what's allowed to be built because of the loss, who interprets that? Because of what the loss is, cause he's, he's told me basically, you know, that, no, it's a totally different situation.
You know, if, if he says something is okay without planning board approval, without, if he can, if he says that he can just issue a building permit or that he can allow you to do something that the code says you can't, then he's, he's the one who can say that. Someone can challenge that.
Right.
Challenge his determination to ZBA, um, another landowner, another applicant or, you know, lots can happen that way. But as of now, uh, he, he has the code, an applicant comes to him, if it requires site plan, it's gonna have to come to us.
Right.
And we would rely on our attorney, maybe our engineer, our building department.
But it says determination whether it needs site plan review.
Uh, initially, yes, it is.
Okay.
If he thinks he can do it with just a building permit, then he can do that.
Okay.
But, um, you know, I, I don't, there are some things that have happened in the village like that that I think should have come to us.
Right.
But.
My next question would be, what is the turnaround time? You know, I mean, obviously it could be three months and it could be a year, but, you know, what's the realistic turnaround time? If I brought an application in tomorrow, that obviously is gonna run up against some of these code issues because the code is not fine tuned yet, nobody's applied for anything and then new, under that new code yet. So this is gonna be the first one, you know, am I expecting a, a six-month, you know, ordeal?
It depends upon what you bump up against, I don't, I can't answer it so hypothetically.
But you did say you couldn't let it wait a year, you know?
Right.
Is that, is that the?
Well, we, we wouldn't wait until, we wouldn't say to you, you know, give us some time to look through this and make some changes and, you know, if the, if the code has to be changed, that's gotta be a village board action that, that requires two readings and, and I forgot what the timetable was for that, is it, is it a month altogether?
Thirty days to stake.
Yeah, so, so things will take time, I mean, we will have to, uh, with our attorney, come up with what we think should be done. The village attorney's gonna weigh in.
Right.
And at some point, the village board will get it and they'll start that process, so that could take a couple of months.
Okay, so I should run it past the building inspector first to see if he thinks it needs a planning board review?
Sure, sure.
And, uh.
I mean, I think that's, at least from my perspective, that's why I wanted to sort of bring this to the attention of the village board, so, I mean, of the planning board so that we could try to be out front before we get an application for this.
Right.
Yeah, for this, in this district.
I was hoping that would happen.
And, and if, you know, if we can go so far tonight, for instance, as to refer this to our attorney, then we've taken a step where we'll get some feedback.
Well, I, I've already sent, uh, your comments to him.
Oh, okay, wait.
And so he's, he's gonna look at it.
Okay, awesome, all right, so then we're ahead there.
And I'm, I'm hoping that the next meeting he'll be here, so we can do that, and there are a couple of other things I wanted to, I wanna mention.
I mean, I did talk to the building inspector last week, um, actually this week, whatever it was last week, about the, um, problem with the Schedule C that you referred. And, and that has not been updated most recently since two thousand and six.
Excuse me, Tom?
So.
Do you have that in your packet?
I understand that this code for this North Chestnut District makes reference to allowable uses in other districts.
Right.
And uses that, and, but the building inspector made it clear that apart from the schedule, the allowable uses as stated in each of the districts is up to date. And so they can sit down with you and say, these are the allowable uses in the North Chestnut Gateway District with reference to what's allowed in B two.
Are you talking about the matrix thing out of date?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem.
So they, but they will, but they can, but that doesn't, that's not something that's.
Well, he may have found like there's a lot more latitude in the description because his retail use has a lot of different meaning.
Something that we might need to talk to our attorney about so that we understand, uh, from our point of view, you know, and the building inspector too, I think we should.
Right.
If everybody agrees, it'd be nice to have him here as well. So if you have an applicant who has a question about an allowable use, the building inspector would be the person to ask, is this enough? Is, is this in your opinion an allowable use and have him point to a portion of the code where that in fact is, so he can say.
He's done that.
He's done my reading, okay, good.
I just, you know, some of it, I just wanna make sure, you know, that's his view, I wanna get your view.
Yeah.
You know, so, okay.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
So let me know, you'll let me know if there's any more discussion about it?
I'll keep you posted, yeah, for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Suppose I'll see you Thursday.
Yes, yes. Where, where is that meeting?
Uh, the meeting about the bus station is at the community center behind town hall, starts at seven P M.
Okay.
This Thursday, right?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Michael, please?
The meeting about the bus station options is gonna be at the community center behind town hall, um, it starts at seven P M.
This Thursday.
Okay, can, can we please now, um, approve the draft planning board minutes for April twenty first, which I was not present for? Somebody have a motion to accept the draft planning board meeting minutes?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion, corrections, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes, thank you, and one, uh, interesting, that's what I do. Okay, um, I'd like to leave the training unless there's something specific someone has about that, I know we're. What, what's the latest with the, with, uh, Mark or someone from building department doing training across? What's up?
Um, yeah, we're, we're just, I, I guess right now we're aiming for, what was the day? The fourth Tuesday in June, um, for training, but it, but that's like ZBA specific, so if you wanna do a planning board specific one, then that might be more helpful, um.
Well, I think we should.
Yeah, so, do we wanna try to set one up today or do we wanna think about it and?
I'm happy to try to set it up today.
Okay.
Do, do we know what the availability is or?
Um, it, it fluctuates, so if we have a couple of days, maybe that would be helpful, but sometimes we're able to attend the Tuesday night meetings. Um, sometime during the day would also work if you wanted to do that.
I can't do during the day, maybe I'll just kinda go back out.
Do you rather?
Okay, so, so some evening, do you have any guidelines from members about?
Evening or weekend?
What evenings work?
Oh.
Could we do like a weekend day or a Saturday morning?
You can propose that, you can try, but I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking what evenings would be good for you? Did you show that in the minutes that Mr. Stefan's grunted?
Oh, sure.
Uh.
Grunted at the.
Sabbath?
Every.
It's the Sabbath, I can't work on the Sabbath.
Every weeknight is fine with me, yeah.
Okay. Like after five?
Pretty much okay.
We can ask you?
After five.
So let's, Liz, do you have any? Okay, so let's just ask him what weeknights he would propose.
I know you're looking to do something sooner or anytime in June?
We, we, we wanna do it so that the members who are deficient in their training requirements can have it done by.
Oh, so soon?
I would say in the month of May.
Okay, so we'll have to get it to the village board to approve it as training credit and.
Yeah, okay.
Cause there's nothing online.
Unfortunately, there is, I said that, you know?
Yeah, I've got, I'm gonna go.
You found out online, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the online course.
Twenty-four hours, yeah.
Oh.
I told you about that months ago, years ago. I sent you links.
I told you to call up the county, I called up.
Yeah, they're broken, send something around.
Yeah.
I sent you links.
I can send it to you again if you want.
Oh, okay.
Send it to us all once again, so Mr. Stefan, I guess, running in the corner will have.
All right.
Okay, so there, there are two things that I need to, uh, to discuss with you this evening. One is the email that I sent out this morning, which concerns the, um, problems with two twelve twenty-three, which granted, not granted, it, it, it gave, um, all new single and two-family houses and modifications to single and two-family houses. Requirements for site plan review. And it was pointed out by several sources that this may be too onerous for someone who wants to make a change to a deck, which includes a village board member now and to do other things like that, that it's really too expensive, too time, time consuming to do that. So one recommendation that George made was the text in the underlined portion here. And I see that Mr. Rocco made some, lots of scribbles on his copy.
I like.
So, um, so in general, what we're saying here is that, um, unless the application will add more than fifty percent, fifty percent or more to the original square footage of a building. And by original, I mean, well, he uses the word cumulative. All expressions there thereafter shall be considered cumulatively. So that's, uh, in case someone says, well, I, I wanna add thirty percent and then come back and add another thirty percent.
Right.
Can't do it, cause that will bring it over, uh, over fifty percent. So he suggested that as a, um, as a way to, it's arbitrary, certainly it's arbitrary. But since I don't really know, perhaps our village board liaison can explain to us what he remembers, the intent of this change.
Yes, I believe that the change was in part stimulated by the planning board and discussions that were had here, uh, because there have been changes to, uh, one and two-family houses that are still called one and two-family houses, even though they have an appearance that might be more like a rooming house.
Appearance of the use.
Might have eight or, or sixteen units in something called the two-family house.
Right.
Without, uh, coming to this board, without the board having any knowledge.
Right.
And we've seen.
Okay, so, I'm gonna need you to talk for one second.
Sure.
So in the case of something like that being new construction, we would get to see that?
Now you would get to see that.
Yes.
Yes.
And even as amended by this?
Yes.
We would get to see it?
Yes.
And in the case of someone making a change, uh, I don't know how they would do it, I guess they could do it in a hundred fifty percent. Okay, so how would you, did you make notes in there about a suggestion for?
Uh, no, what, well, I did not make, but I do have a suggestion.
Yes.
Uh, there are standards, let's not use criteria in this case because it's not yes or no, it's more or less. So there are standards that are sometimes used about what is the, uh, baseline for change that should come. You don't wanna say that somebody who nails up six planks on a fence is making a substantial change enough to come to you. I mean, why?
Right.
Or somebody who is planting six new lilac bushes is not gonna have to come to you. So what should come to you in, you know, as a plan, you're the planning board for approval for what? There have been some, uh, notions of even say, some ideas that would be that any exterior work, uh, um, amounting to, I'm gonna just say, you know, fifteen thousand dollars in current usage, uh, might be sufficient to come to the planning board. Now, I've just made that up by the way, uh, but you will have heard stuff like that sometimes. People say, you don't wanna come to the planning board for a minor change. You don't wanna come to the planning board because somebody said, I'm gonna put three new, uh, electric lights on my lawn. So I went to three electric lights, it's gonna cost me a hundred and fifty, you know, whatever, that's not a planning board. But if somebody did put three new arc lights that, uh, shone out onto the street, you might have to say, okay, you know? So there has to be a standard of some sort that says, why should something come to you rather than not?
So rather than have you tell us what you think the standard should be.
See.
What process do you think we should use, we haven't yet polled over here, but just to get the village board members' opinion about what process we should use to get this to the village board, to clean this up so that it takes care of the unintended consequences that are.
It could be so simple a matter as saying to the village board, we believe that the law as written is too broad or sweeping and that there needs to be some standard, whether you wanna set it or not, there needs to be some standard that restricts trivial matters. that restricts trivial matters from coming to the planning board.
Okay. So do you see anything wrong in this as written?
Well, the only problem I have with it, uh, from, and I think I'm remembering it clearly, is that it seems to me to be not strict enough.
Not restrictive.
It gives, you know, you, you have to make a 50% or more expansion.
Yes.
Uh, you know, so that, you'd say, well, okay, I have a house that's, uh, twenty, let's say, you know, a standard house, 2,300 square feet. So I'm gonna have to add 1,200 square feet before I'm gonna have to come to the planning board.
Did the building inspectors look at this later?
Um, I spoke to Mark about this and told, suggested the 50% thing, and he thought it was fine.
He knows fine.
Just this is off...
But that doesn't mean anything. I don't care about that. What I care about is the village board's initial intent, since they are our legislators.
Yes.
And what, what they would like from us to change the law, from us as a suggestion, or what our criteria should be, to change the law to make it less sweeping.
So who said, what's the issue? The issue is that trivial matters are gonna now be clogging up the planning board's agenda.
I don't care about clogging us up. I care about more about the applicant's undue hardship, because they have to go through a $2,000 or $5,000 expense and a two-month process to add 100 square feet to their deck.
Again, you know, uh, work it from both sides. I'm now thinking, because I love you guys so much, I'm thinking of it from your side. But we love all of the applicants as well. So let's say, what is in the best interest of the community and the board to make the process work more efficiently for everybody? What, what standard should be used so that we're not imposing process, uh, obstacles on persons who wanna make trivial changes?
Okay. May I please step back to my original intent question?
Yeah.
And the example you gave, I think, was, I believe it, 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 it was Mr. Caffrey's two Mohawk property that was alive at that time that got the action to be taken. Maybe I'm wrong.
Um, I'm not sure that it was any, uh, single instance, there were multiple issues.
Yes, we have a call, but okay, let's say whatever, whatever. But something of that magnitude, something with the potential for eight bedrooms instead of, uh, three, let's say, four.
Maybe, maybe for 16 people.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, people, we can't legislate people that I know of, other than...
Well, you can't legislate bedrooms, though, and, uh...
Yeah.
So in some instances, as you know, there were places called two-family houses that had temporary partitions in one room that made it into two rooms, in effect.
Right.
But not, not really, because you could remove it, since they were temporary.
Right. Now, I've, I've heard a suggestion made, um, and I've been talking about this for a while, to have a different, um, category of use, which would be called something like commercial residential, which would take in the absentee landlord type of property, that where, where it's, it is a two-family house by most definitions, but it's also an income-producing property, more than a residence for, you know, something like that. And so we could have different requirements for that type of building, but that's a big deal to affect. For now, at least, I'd like to make this more reasonable.
Yes.
And the way this is written, it says here, um, we offer the following amendment as a possible solution. I, I, I'm not gonna do the village board's job of determining, and we're gonna have a new village board.
Yeah, yeah. My suggestion, uh, my advice is don't even become, why become this price, precise? My advice was, say back to the village board, we need some standard that will, uh, will cease imposing unnecessary burdens, uh, procedure on both the planning board and the applicants. Why say 50% or, or more of this, you know, why make a very, very specific recommendation, which then becomes the focus of the discussion?
So you're saying...
Well, I, I would like the law to be very specific.
Yes, but do you wanna write the law first?
No, no.
That's what this is doing.
So this is saying this is a possible solution.
I understand that.
So you're, so, so you're saying, make a, um, a more vague and less specific request of them and the desire to have them come up with more detailed instructions on what you want done?
If you want your lawyer's suggestion to be the beginning of the discussion, that's okay with me. My own, uh, approach would be, instead of calling it vague, I would call it generic.
Or general.
You wanna make a general, uh, request for some more specificity in the law that removes the burden of very, very small, or very small, or small changes having to come to the planning board.
Now, one, uh, one contractor said that he had an applicant that wanted to add a bedroom to her house, so that she would be able to, I think she wanted to rent out the other two, or I forgot why. But, so one bedroom would be 25% more, or something like that. And he thought that she wouldn't be willing to do it if it was gonna cost her $3,000, $4,000 and site plan fees and...
Yeah, but that's something different than adding square footage. She could have a lot that was only big enough to be a three-bedroom house.
No, well, but that's a, but that's clear. That's a code thing, right? This is, this is a modification to the building that we're talking about.
Right.
If it, if it doesn't fit in the code, you can't do it. If, if the density is too high, you can't do it. But assuming that, I mean, setbacks won't change, the density will fall within the, uh, code limitations, then it's a matter, the only question that I'm asking now is what rises to the level that requires site plan review by planning board? And I'm, I'm happy to say to village board, this has become a necessary burdensome to many of our residents. Fix it. And that's it. I'm not giving an example. But I, I just gave the example based on our attorneys and our, our building inspectors. Yes, Liz?
No.
Great.
Oh, geez.
You know, New Pauls used to have a judge named Judge Schneider a long time ago. And I asked him one time, how do you send a person, why would you send a person to jail? He said, if you steal a can of tuna fish, because you're hungry, that's bad, but I'm not gonna sentence you to jail. If you steal a can of caviar, you're having nicks. I think there's a certain thing that if somebody comes before the building inspector and says, I wanna put a shed in my backyard, the building inspector should have a certain amount of ability to say, he's not going into the setbacks. It's a small building, it's not gonna have a big impact on the neighborhood. Why should you have to have a site plan review to put a shed on, or add 100 feet to a debt, or pave the driveway? And, and paving the driveway could take over lawn coverage, but nobody comes in and gets building permits for it. It's driving me crazy for years. Um, but a building inspector would have the ability on certain things, I would think, to make these decisions. I think the current building inspectors are reading the law, saying they don't have the ability to make a decision on anything with this current law. That everything becomes a site plan review. And I'm saying that, no, not everything, not everybody goes to jail. You know, I broke the law today. I was on the New York State thruway, and every time I go on that thruway, I can't help myself.
Shouldn't say this on the conversation.
Oh, oh.
Okay, so...
But I'm just saying, but you know, the...
So let's get back to this, cause I wanna wrap this up.
Can, can write a law that, that's...
I wanna wrap this up. Does anybody have any, any suggestion about changing this to be more palatable to everybody? How would you like it?
Do you wanna get this to the, at, at the end of this meeting?
I, I wanna do, yes.
Okay, I wanna make, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, that's what I want.
The sentencing report?
So I would recommend, so I, I'm fine with what you wrote here, and, um, I'm happy to make a motion that is this letter.
I have written, I have one reservation.
Wait one second, please. You made a motion?
I make, well, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the village board, um, recognizing that this is only one of many possible solutions.
That's what it says?
Yep.
Okay, round a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Liz?
Yes, um, my reservation has to do with, uh, for calculation, uh, baseline for calculation of square footage shall be the size as of May 31st, 2015. Exactly, you know, a year from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, um, how do we know what size it was as of May 31st, 2015?
We, we have files in the building board.
As good as they are, that's what we have.
That's the only thing we have.
Like I said, how are we going?
Liz, this is, this is all we have. We have, we have the building department with building files, with permits. I mean, someone could make changes that we wouldn't know about, and what the fuck can you do? If you have another way to put it, make a suggestion, I don't know. Mr. Litten, do you have any, any comments?
I wouldn't dare.
Oh, please.
No, I, I think we should make a more vague and general statement, but this, this is a good starting point. Let's go with it.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Please do.
Uh, I'm gonna, uh, ask you whether, if in the course of, uh, discussion, acting as the liaison from this body, I were to say words that I believe you either said or were a paro of that, that the planning board intends this to be only one possible suggestion as to...
If you agree to kind of oppose them to the House of Representatives, we offer the following amendment as a possible solution.
I understand that, but this issue will arise in discussion. This, this paro, the underlying section will stand out more than the prior section.
Because that's the one.
I'll emphasize, I'll emphasize, I'm asking you, is it okay with you if I emphasize that it's one possible?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Would you like me to underline possible solution?
You may.
Okay.
Feel unshackled.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Motion passes. Do I need to give you anything else for you to send this?
Nope, I have it.
Thank you.
Does this apply to when a building changes their, their use? Because as of now, you get applications for change of use.
To a residential?
This residential.
Oh, this is only residential? Okay.
They have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.
Yep.